Good evening, councillors, members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me. There are no practices planned this evening, so if the fire alarm goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible by one of the three exits. One, two, three. We assemble across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Please, can I ask everyone to switch their mobile phones to silent or off? This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. The meeting is being webcast, so I'll introduce the officers in front of me right now. First of all, we have Lewis Jones, our planning lawyer. Next to him is Elizabeth Sims, the head of planning, followed by Chris French, the team leader for eastern and central area, and Rebecca Clark, principal planning officer, who is tonight's reporter. So we move on, please. Minutes have been laid on table for half an hour prior to the meeting, as you wish I sign them as a true record. Thank you. Apologies for absence, Emma.
We have apologies from councillors David Els, Bryan Adams, Mike Ban, Michael Goodridge, Dennis Lee and Jordan Ward.
Thank you. Decorations of interest, Emma?
None prior to the meeting.
Questions by members of the public, Emma?
None received.
And questions from members, Emma?
None received.
Thank you. Item six, performance against government target. Well, the latest available statistics were received at our last meeting, the next available stats will be received next month. Application for planning permission, WA 2018 0682, West Cranley Nurseries, Oldford Road, Cran... The proposal details pursuant to outline permission granted under WA 2016 2207 for 67 dwellings to go to associated car parking, landscaping and open space pursuant to conditions 1, 4, 5, 7, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 22, 26, 40, and a statement of conformity to the original environmental statement has been provided with this application. So, all yours, Rebecca. Sorry, Elizabeth, you're introducing it first, followed by...
Rebecca, thank you, chairman. Evening, members. Just a few general introductory comments from me to hopefully help you this evening, and then Rebecca's going to take you through the presentation. This application was clearly deferred at your meeting on the 12th of November to seek further information on the phasing elements of the outlined planning permission and the delivery of the Noel Park Trust units. Sorry, I can't read my own writing, apologies, members. The report has been updated, as you will have seen, to include further information on these aspects, and Rebecca will take you through those updates in a moment and concentrates on those matters which are relevant to the deferral in particular. I don't need to remind members that this is part of a strategic site in your local plan, upstate local plan. The principle's been established, the principle's been confirmed through the outline permission, and it can be implemented going forward. This is for reserve matters, it isn't an opportunity to revisit the principle of development, and that includes having regard to the importance of the signed section 106 agreement which runs with the outline permission, and that secures provision of the obligations in the 106 going forward for this section of the decision of the permission and also further elements of it going forward. So even though this is developed like many major developments in phases, you can have confidence that the 106 will deliver those components which are secured in the section 106. An important element of that, which I hope is helpful, is that whilst there's clear interest in future phases of the development, the planning merit of those future phases is not currently before you, and you can have confidence that those phases will be built out and the detail will be complied with in due course, but to include considerations in relation to detail that's not yet before us clearly would not be appropriate in relation to the current consideration this evening. So I'm sure you're aware of all that, but I hope that framework is helpful to you. I'm now going to pass over to Rebecca to take members through the main presentation. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, chairman. So as members will recall, the application was brought before the joint planning committee on the 12th of November for determination. It was subject to a decision to defer to seek some further information on the phasing elements of the outline permission and the delivery of the Noel Park Trust units. So the applicant A2 Dominion has provided some additional information since this time. There's been a letter from A2 Dominion and also a letter from the Noel Park Trust, which is set out on the update sheet before members this evening. So the slide before members now sets out some key details that's been included in that information. A2 Dominion, who are a registered provider within the borough, they have provided some numbers for the future phases of the wider outline development, and this is to seek to reassure members that the affordable housing provision as set out in the 106 agreement will be delivered across the phases. So the 106 agreement requires 35% affordable housing to be delivered, it doesn't specify 35% across each phase, so as members will see from the table, the shortfall in phase one will be picked up in phase two, and then that's providing for 35% overall across the three phases. In terms of timeframes, A2 Dominion intend to submit reserve matters applications for phase two in spring 2019, and then for phase three in autumn 2019. These are anticipated timeframes, as they do intend to seek pre-application advice. With regards to the public park, there is a reserve matters application that's currently with the council, it's currently undergoing some validation checks. This will include some details of the financing, the maintenance and management of the park. The current phase before members this evening would deliver the Noel Park Trust units, and I'll show members those on a plan in due course. These would help provide a long-term income stream to support the long-term maintenance and management of the park, and they would be leased to the Noel Park Trust prior to completion of the park as per the section 106 agreement. So this now shows the illustrative phasing plan, setting out phases two and three, and the numbers of homes and the number of affordable homes to be provided as part of each of those future phases. So to remind members of the sites and the reserve matters that are currently under consideration this evening, so this sets out the location plan, the area outlined in red is the current application site, but the wider outline permission relates to the site in blue, so the site's located to the east of Oldford Road and it comprises open fields, approximately 3.6 hectares in area. So this shows an aerial of the application site, and some site photographs. So this shows the wider site area that was subject of the outline application. Outline permission was granted in August 2017 for the erection of 265 dwellings and the formation of the public parkland to the east. Access was determined at the outline stage. So the wider site comprises essentially three areas, we've got the public park to the very east, the application site in the centre, and then the future residential phases to the west of Oldford Road. So the principle of 265 dwellings across the entire area has already been established, and the access to the site has been agreed. So the current application seeks approval for the layout, appearance, scale and landscaping for phase one of the residential development, and I'm just going to quickly go through an overview of each of these elements. So firstly, turning to layouts, the plan shows 67 dwellings which are spread across the site. There's a central spine road running to the north with the approved access off Oldford Road to the west. Then there's secondary roads to serve the proposed units. There'd be pedestrian pathways provided to the north and the south of the site, and these would connect with the future public park phase to the east. We've got an areas of open space which would include the play areas to the north of the site. Just turning now to scales, so the dwellings would all be two-storey in height with some single-storey garages and some single-storey detached bin and cycle stores to serve the apartment buildings. In terms of the appearance, the dwellings would be of a more contemporary design, they'd feature architectural detailing such as pitch roofs, gables, recesses, framed entrances, balconies and chimneys, and I'll take members through some elevations in due course. Turning to landscaping, there'd be planting along the site boundaries, we've got private amenity areas which would be grassed, and they'd be demarcated with close boarded fencing. There would be some low hedging and shrub planting within the street scene, and there would be some black metal fencing set at a height of 1.2 metres at the site entrance, and a mixture of hard and soft surfacing within the site. So the site would feature a mixture of markets and affordable units, 14 of the total 67 units would be affordable, and I've just said separately and as part of the current, sorry, as part of the section 106 agreement attached to the outline, there are units to be provided under the current phase to provide the long-term income and support, maintenance and management of the public park. So those are the Noel Park Trust units, and those are shown in green to the west of the site. So this plan just shows some of the connections through the site, there's pedestrian links and cycle routes provided, this would provide for access between the site and the future public park phase to the east, and there's emergency access services route which would feature the reinforced grass surfacing to the south. So turning now to parking, in total, there would be 137 allocated spaces, these would serve the residential units on the site, and then there would be a further 30 unallocated visitor spaces which are shown in green on the plan. The majority of the allocated spaces are all to be provided within the plots, either in the form of garage spaces or driveway spaces. There would be a parking courtyard provided to serve the apartment buildings, some of which would be in a car barn, and the overall parking provision would accord with the council's parking guidelines, and there's been a condition recommended to secure the use of the garages for parking of vehicles and incidental storage. So this plan just confirms that the proposed heights of the buildings would be two-storey with the single-storey garage elements in the light of blue colour. In terms of refuse and recycling, refuse vehicles would drive along and stop on the central spine road, collectors would walk to the bin collection points which are shown on blue, and the council's refuse and recycling coordinators confirm that the distances that residents and collectors would need to walk would accord with our guidelines. There would be storage bins provided within the private amenity spaces, and within flatted units, that would be for, sorry, there would be a communal store for the flatted units. And there has been a sweatpath analysis just to confirm that the layout could accommodate a refuse vehicle. So before taking you through some of the elevational designs, this is just indicating the materials palette that's proposed to be used. And the next few slides will show members some of the proposed dwelling designs, so as previously mentioned, they would each feature differing architectural features and would be of a more contemporary appearance. So this first slide shows some of the two and three bed units, and then these are some of the three and the four bed units, and the four and five. And these are the flatted units. And then there's two slides now which shows members some of the street scenes, so this is, the top shows along the western boundary, we've then got a vertical section going through the site, and a street scene along the very eastern boundary. And then the top one shows the collection of the dwellings to the north of the site, we've then got some of the dwellings to the south of the central spine road, and then on the very bottom, those are the dwellings along the very southern site boundary. And just to take you through some 3D visuals, and just to confirm, obviously this 3D visual shows the posten rail fencing, but to confirm it would be 1.2 metres high, black metal fencing. And so this is showing sort of the northern section with the play area on the left, and again of the linear park to the north, and then this is looking in the middle of the site, looking vertically towards the north. And then this just shows an aerial image of the proposed scheme, so the dwellings here are actually to the north of the site, so the public park phase would be to the east, and then the future phases two and three would actually be on this side of Oldford Road, so you're looking southerly towards the site here with the access road. So the matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment are set out on the slide. Overall, officers consider that the development is of an appropriate layout, scale, appearance and landscaping, the car parking would fully accord with the council's guidelines, and there's been no material harm that's been identified by officers. On this basis, the officer recommendation is for approval of the reserve matters as set out in the agenda report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. Now we move into public speaking, and I ask Judith Ashton to come forward. You have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. As you'll be aware, this site forms part of the wider area that benefits from outline planning permission for 265 dwellings and a new public park. It also forms part of a wider area that is allocated for development in the recently adopted local plan. Thus, the principle of development is well established, and the issues to be considered this evening are those associated with the fact that this is a reserve matters application, i.e. details of the appearance, landscaping, layout and scale of development. You will be aware from the detailed committee report that is before you that there have been no objections to this application from any statutory consultees. It would also appear from the debate at the last JPC that whilst the design was something of a marmite issue, there were no strong views proffered on the appearance, landscaping, layout or scale of development. Rather, the main issues were the phasing of the development and the associated delivery of the affordable units, and assurances about the future management of the parkland. You will all have received the letter from Nick Hutchins, the executive director of A2 Dominion Group. Whilst summarised in the committee report, this letter clearly sets out the intended build programme and the associated level of affordable housing to be delivered in each phase, the intention being that phase one, this phase, provides 67 dwellings of which 14, 21%, are affordable, phase two provides 118 dwellings of which 51, i.e. 43%, would be affordable, and phase three delivers 80 dwellings of which 28, i.e. 35%, would be affordable. A2D, who are a registered provider, have also made it clear that the majority of the affordable in the phase two will be developed in the early phase of that development, and will be to a mix agreed as per the 106. Whilst we note that officers are satisfied that the overall mix of affordable accommodation can be met within the scheme as a whole, and there is nothing within the 106 that requires 35% provision within each phase, you will have noted the fact that A2D have indicated that they are willing to instruct their solicitors to submit a separate application under section 106a of the Town and Country Planning Act to secure the provision of the affordable housing across the phases as set out in their letter. This can progress independently of this application, and A2D have suggested that it also provides for a change to the triggers in the current 106 so that each phase triggers its own 106 contributions. As set out in A2D's letter, this does not need to be done in advance of the determination of this reserve matters application, or concurrently with it, as both matters would delay determination of this application, to which it should be noted that this application within its initial phases provides three of the two-bedroom apartments secured via the 106 to help fund the Noel Park Trust, and thus the future management of the park, and the affordable rented units will also be provided within the initial phase of this phase one development. Securing consent for this reserve matters application is thus of significant importance to the future of the park. As for the future management of the park, you have heard that there is already a reserve matters application before the authority for this. A2D are, as they have said, working in partnership with Noel Park Trust to procure, construct and develop the park as part of their land purchase agreement. Whilst I trust A2D's letter has assured members of their commitment to move forward and deliver this development, I would finally like to assure those members who have not heard of A2D before of their financial credentials and ability to deliver this development. With an asset base of 8.8 billion, they are in a very strong financial position to deliver this development. Thank you.
Just a final sentence.
Final sentence was, given the information you now have before you, I trust that you will resolve to grant planning permission in accordance with your officers' recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. All members, we deferred this application on the 12th of November, the main concern being the relation to the provision of affordable homes and the phasing plan. I personally think that any developer would face a large development like this makes commercial sense. And just one thing that was mentioned by Rebecca, the boundary treatment, Cranley Parish Council requested a long-lasting boundary treatment which has architectural merit, it's the same as the adjacent bellway, so I trust that we can move forward on that one fairly quickly. So, members, up to you. Councillor Follows.
Thank you, chair. And so I actually wasn't at the last one of these on the 12th, so I had the pleasure of watching this one back for the first time. I was pleased to see the group defer it. Sorry, do you want me to stop there, chair? That's all right, that's right. So I was pleased, that's right, I was pleased to see the group defer it, and also I think it does show that in deferring, sometimes when we aren't comfortable making a determination, there is some benefit in doing that, as I believe the developer has in this case given us nearly all the information that you asked for. The only comments I would just quickly make, so questions for officers, are there any visual differences between the market and affordable housing? I can't tell from here, but I just wanted to double check there was no obvious distinction between the two lots. And also, just to check, will the proposed section 106 agreement prevent any future reduction in the affordable numbers via any other methods such as viability assessments, or will it effectively make this binding for the rest of the phases going forward? Other than that, the only other thing I would note is just, it's a little unfortunate from my perspective that a significant proportion of the affordable housing is one bed, I think it was 41%, which seems rather a lot, but other than that, I agree with the supporters' view that it is very marmite in terms of the view of the actual design of it, as some of them I do think are quite interesting, I quite live in some of them myself, but then some of them are very odd. But other than that, thank you, chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Follows. Rebecca, do you want to come back in at this time, or shall I move on to councillor Townsend?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, just in terms of the tenure and the appearance, we're satisfied that there actually wouldn't be a sort of a real difference between the affordable and the market. In fact, I think I've put the majority of the different dwelling types on those elevation plans anyway, but we're satisfied that that would be acceptable. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca. Councillor Townsend.
I'm very pleased to see that the phasing plan has been put in and that A2 Dominion are willing to enter into a variation of the section 106, and also that the parkland application is now in, and I'm sure it will be on our website very soon. I do have a couple of things that I would like to raise with officers, one of them is the public footpath 393 that runs on the southern boundary of the site. I couldn't see how the, what the relationship was between the public footpath and the, what is being called the emergency access road. From my knowledge of the site, I cannot understand how the two fit on that particular map, and I would be very grateful for some information about that, so it's public footpath 393, I believe. The other thing, in the previous application, I think, was mentioned about a five-metre buffer between the hedgerows, and I just want to make sure that that has actually been accounted for, and that the charging points that we have put in, the quick charging points as well for the cars, thank you.
Fine. I think that's condition seven. Likewise, space standards and everything else are there, but Rebecca, do you want to come back straight away? Chris?
Thank you, chairman. Just come back on a point of clarification about the footpath. The plan that's up on the screen there, there is a footpath that runs along the southern boundary, and the application also, you can see the, what's shown on that plan there is narrower than the width of the road for parts of it, but the access road runs just to the north of that footpath, and in parts they're combined, but in parts they're apart, so we're satisfied that we can, that the footpath is shown on the, on the plan as being, being kind of re-provided within the scheme. Thank you, chairman.
And the five metre?
Chairman, in the meantime, while Rebecca's looking that up, there was another point raised by Councillor Follows about any possible future variations of the section 106 agreement. Lewis may want to answer this more fully in legal terms, but if I could explain very simply, as planning authority, you've granted permission with a section 106 agreement that you can feel confident should be complied with in its current form and as a signed document, it's binding on anyone developing a site with an interest in the land. That being said, you cannot prevent an applicant, if they feel they have a case going forward, seeking to vary the agreement on whatever terms they choose to seek to vary it, but then your decision as planning authority is to whether there's any justification for that, and that includes any viability case. You can't say categorically, there would never be any attempt to do that, there'd need to be an absolutely unequivocal case to justify it, but that would be your decision as committee, but it wouldn't be reasonable to prevent this development on the basis that that provision exists, because that's a reasonable opportunity for any applicant. Thank you, chairman.
Fine, thank you very much, indeed. I'll go to councillor Gray first and come back to the other members who wish to come back in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I found it very useful to read through the submission that's been made by the applicant in relation to the issues we've raised in deferment. I know that we have had comments before that we're not really to look forward at phasing, we're to assume that they happen, but it's very confusing to members if they haven't got an update on phasing when it comes to the meeting. We understand it's only provisional and they could change and other things, but I think it's a very valid question that this committee raised the other day, and we've been very well satisfied with the submission of documents. I've got two comments. One, the comments from the highways authority said they're quite happy with the approach to electric car charging, providing the communal points are fast charged. Now, that's not in condition seven, but I would hope the officers basically can confirm that that is the intention, that the communal points will be fast charged and the other ones are trickle. The other point of concern, and I'm sorry I haven't raised it before...
The answer's yes, by the way.
Thank you. It's that this collection point, I'm yet concerned with what happens to anyone who's disabled. Are we saying that they've got to take, so if someone right at the bottom of a row has got his bin, he's got to somehow shuffle up to a collection point to put his bin there? I don't think that's particularly practical or helpful. Perhaps the officers could comment to whether that's being considered in their review. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All you have to do is apply to Wavely with a disability notice, and they come pick the bin up from your house, so I'm quite sure that the officers will confirm that.
Well, I, sorry, if I could come back to you on that, yes, but it is the intention that there's collection points, and that is, that's what they're demonstrating on there, that basically refuse wagons can go around the middle, providing they use the collection points. So I, just, could I have that spelt out as to how... So I, just, could I have that spelt out as to how it would work in practice?
Rebecca?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so the refuse lorry would essentially stop at the purple dots along the central spine road, and then they, the bin collectors would then walk down from the central spine road to the bin collection points on the blue. So the dwellings to the south of those blue collection points would then, yes, need to take their bins to those collection points. Thank you, Chairman.
But I'm fairly convinced, because I have two neighbours who are disabled, and their bins are collected from a rather longer distance than is shown by the southernmost buildings there, it's something that you applied to Waverley for help.
Chairman, if I could just also reiterate that we have shared this with our colleagues in environmental services, and they are happy with this arrangement according to normal guidelines. So that is the test that we expect of our applicants. So we've got that feedback, that this arrangement is compliant, if that's helpful.
Thank you. Council Foreski?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'm very pleased to see this application has come back so quickly after our deferral on the 12th of November, which got a full support from this committee. On the meeting of the 12th, we were warned of the possible dangers of non-determining on the evening, and I think what we've demonstrated is that we raised genuine concerns, and I have to pay tribute to A2D and officers for taking on board and listening to what was said. So instead of being feeling that we were not doing the right thing by succumbing to possible non-determination and the threats that came of that, I think this has highlighted how brilliantly an opportunity had arisen where we could express our concerns. The developer's gone away, they've listened, they've looked, I think they've set a very good example out there to other developers, that, you know, if they, if we do raise concerns, they are genuine, they come from our residents, they come from us experienced councillors, and it's not to be ignored. So I do pay tribute for them to have listened to the concerns that have been raised. I'll always be one of these people who will regret the loss of this greenfield, but I have to accept the principles of development has been established, it's now history, we need to get on with it. Actually, I quite like the design, I think in some places it is quite creative, it is very different, and I think it adds something to that part of the village that is going to be new. So I like in parts of the design. However, as I say, we made a decision, it was deferred, you've listened, I pay tribute. Now what we need to do is get on with it. So I will be supporting the officer's recommendation this evening. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. It's interesting that the meeting was on the 12th, and the letter from Nick Hutchins came in on the 15th to Elizabeth Sims, so they reacted very quickly from what they saw on the webcast. It was working that night. Council Manna?
Thank you, Chairman. I've only one question, and if I could ask officers to help by putting up the plan which shows the affordable housing, I think coloured purple. And a comment I feel obliged to make is that it is a pity, in my opinion, that these are all together in one corner. I am fully aware of the argument that housing associations and other providers who have to maintain these units do not want them scattered, I believe the term is pepper-potted all over the development, but if we're talking about small integers like two or three locations, I cannot believe it makes much difference to their time or cost in doing their job. And I think from a social point of view, to have these units in different parts of the development would be desirable. So I'm sorry to see that they're concentrated, and I hope this message will be taken on board by officers for future phases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking at it, they're on the northern edge and on the western edge, so they are moved around. But A2 Dominion have got 37,000-plus homes, so I think that as a provider of affordable homes and shared ownership, they've got a fairly good idea of what works and what doesn't.
So could I come back, Chairman? Forgive me for disagreeing with you. I think that the point here is that the affordable housing, not the shared ownership, are in one place. And I'm just making the point that from a social perspective, I do not believe that to be ideal. Whether it's good for the provider is frankly a different point, and one I'm not really concerned about. I do accept, of course, providers don't want things scattered in very little units all over the place, but here I think it's unfortunate that they're only in one place. Thank you.
Council Townsend, do you want to come back?
Thank you, Chairman. At this moment in time, I'm not satisfied that we're not interfering with the public footpath. I know that officers have said that the public footpath is between the emergency access road and the actual boundary, but I know this site very well, and I'm just trying to make sure that we are making sure that the footpath is retained along the edge of that field. Now, if I can be assured that it is, and there is, that the footpath is somewhere else, which I am not aware of, I have walked this public footpath several times myself on a daily basis, and I'm just struggling, and I want it to be the case that there is no interference, but at this moment in time, I cannot understand the relationship between the emergency access road, which I understand is required for emergency fire vehicles, and the public footpath which runs along the boundary there. And, you know, it's important that the public footpath, the rights of way are retained, and at this moment, I'm really struggling. I did check the interactive map myself on the Surrey highways, and from where I could see, that it actually ran literally along that part of that access road, and I'm just very concerned. That footpath runs completely along, it links the linear path as well, it runs all the way along to Noel Lane, and I just need reassurance and to see where the public footpath and the relationship between that and this emergency access road, because there is a bank of trees there, and I just am struggling with where the two can fit between the trees and where the emergency access road. The five-metre buffer that I mentioned about the hedgerows, that was part of the, I believe, the ecological enhancement reports, and I just wanted to make sure that perhaps, that was, made sure that that was perhaps a condition, or it may be dealt with in the condition about the Eco Sulis report. But it's the public footpath I have got some real concerns about. Thank you.
Christopher, Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. I understand entirely the point you're making, Council Townsend, and it's very well made, but just to reassure members, two things here. The plan that we've got, unfortunately we can't display it, there's lots of plans to do with this development, and we put up the ones which I think have been most useful to you. With respect, we weren't expecting this question perhaps if we had received it in advance, but we are where we are, we've got it, we can answer it. There is broad parallel alignment and no overlap. There is one small area where there may be some small overlap, but in planning terms, you would have to identify actual harm to refuse it on that basis. Now, public footpaths are responsibility of the county highway authority, and they require generally unfettered, no obstruction to a footpath, we know that, that's the law. Having said that, the rights of way team have seen the plans, they've not objected to it. Bearing in mind what we're talking about, it's not a road, we're talking about emergency access. They haven't object, they haven't raised an objection, and in procedural terms, that is tantamount to them not raising an objection, we have to take that in good faith as decision makers. But the important point, getting to the heart of your concern, we're talking about the provision of an emergency access, which by definition, hopefully, is a very exceptional incidence. So the use of that very small part of footpath for an emergency vehicle to use it would be de minimis in that sense for exceptional reasons. So from a planning viewpoint, I think it'd be very, very hard to make a cogent argument to resist this development on that basis. I totally understand where you're coming from, I think it's a point well made, but we do understand what you're saying, there is broad, across the scheme, there's broad differentiation between the two routes, there's a slight coincidence in a very small area, and there's no objection from the county highway authority. So I think you can be confident that the issue is safe, in my opinion. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Council Follows?
So, just to actually come back on that particular question, can you just explain to me what level planning officers actually go and challenge when there's been no reply received from such a consultancy as that? Because actually, I know you're obviously correct in saying that no response is in fact reasonable, but it just feels like it would be nice to know how much effort we go to to get them to reply.
Thank you, Chairman. So to provide a well-researched and informed report, we would want to be satisfied that all material considerations are explored and we are aware of the existence of any objections or concerns or even support from statutory consultees. But you know the rules in the management order, we are required to notify and consult, and that is what we do. So we've done our part. If there were to be an additional level of requirement on us to chase everybody we notify and consult, I think that would be onerous. Consultees have a responsibility to reply, that is their obligation, and we're confident that they do that. So I understand the question you're asking, but I think you need to take some comfort that the process does work in the way it's meant to.
Can I just come back on that very briefly? The reason I ask that is because when we're talking about consultees such as, say, Natural England, and an application we're considering in about two weeks where they hadn't replied yet, do we ever take into account their capacity to actually process all the things that we're asking them to do? And so actually, is there any sometimes reasons why they haven't replied, is all I'm saying? Sometimes there are important consultees that we've not got replies from?
Elizabeth?
So sometimes consultees, like any organisation, have resource issues, and they do get behind at times for their responses. We're in constant dialogue with them about the issues that we need to be. We're not talking about that application tonight, wouldn't be relevant me to comment on that, but actually, we have received some feedback from them, so they are there, they are operating. That's all I can say really, that, you know, most of the time, consultees are required to respond in the timeframe of the management order, and there are penalties for them not doing that, so they generally tend to do that.
Council Nuzia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was the question regarding the disabled persons, that has been quite well answered by you and Elizabeth as well. Plus, the houses, the design, as Council Fidzinski says, is very nice, and I'm using that kind of structure on my extension as well, because I like it, so I second it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Dinos?
Thank you. Just cut the points, because I wasn't present on the first, when the application was first considered. We've heard quite a bit from Council Townsend about the footpath, and I just wonder whether maybe to give some comfort that a condition could be worded about the maintenance of that footpath and have it numbered, just so it's absolutely clear what the concerns were. So I just wondered whether that will give the confidence with some of my colleagues here that, you know, the footpath will be retained, other than the extreme emergency uses, but it won't be eroded or anything like that, just a condition of some sort. That was my point. The car barn, which I believe is parking for up to four, and this is probably covered in your previous one, I just wondered who was maintaining that? Is that individual houses or is it part of a management company? Because I don't know who owns it, it's, you know, who's going to maintain them if there's damage to them or anything else? Is it the houses allocated or parking space within that part of the barn, or is it anybody can park there? My final point about marmite, I love marmite, but I don't like these designs, but that, like we say, is a personal issue, and that's what makes us all unique, but I love marmite, but not these designs. But I'd just be grateful for consideration of the condition and just about the parking barn.
Right, I'm sure the officers will answer that one. Elizabeth again?
Chairman, Lewis is going to answer the earlier point, and then perhaps I'll come back on the car park. Do you want to talk about the footpath? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. My reaction to the suggestion to include a condition requiring potentially the applicant to abide by certain maintenance requirements over the land that overlaps with the footpath, in my opinion, isn't necessary. I'm not sure that any harm has been identified to warrant imposing that condition. Furthermore, the county council have limited freehold title over any adopted footpath, and my suggestion would be that it would be appropriate for the county council and the landowner to come to any arrangements between themselves in terms of maintenance for that overlap. I think that would be the more suitable approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Council Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I thank the applicants very much for the efforts that they've put forward here. It doesn't entirely address the concerns that I had, but I would like first to point out that I don't think anyone is in any way questioning the integrity of A2 Dominion. We know they're a very, very good company, highly respected, but planning permission goes with the land, not the person. It's absolutely irrelevant whether this applicant can be trusted or not, because we don't know who would end up, we are looking at a planning permission that would be granted for the land, not for them, it could be sold on. We have no idea whether they own the land, we have no idea whether they own the land that the park would be on, or whether that's part of an arrangement. The officer report talks at page eight about a land purchase agreement to which we're not party, we don't know what the situation is. And my main concern, I must admit, was that whether the park is guaranteed or is in any way avoidable, because, you know, this is a major development in Cranley, a lot of people were concerned about it. It was granted on balance when the environmental impacts, which, you know, most people were very afraid of, certainly most of them weren't entirely in front of us, because it was only access at the outline stage, if I remember correctly, so drainage, all the rest of it, all the big issues here are for consideration at these reserve matters stages. I don't have any information on the drainage, I mean, the first recommendation that we've got on page five is details submitted in regard to conditions. For, I am none the wiser over the past fortnight as to whether I should agree to the discharge of these, I've got no details whatsoever as far as I can tell on those, only the word of the statutory consultees, and I don't know what detail they've been into, they should have, of course, but we know how busy they are, as others have said. And I know officers can discharge them themselves, I see no reason why I should have to vote for that one, I've got no information, when officers can go and do it under their delegated decisions, and I certainly wouldn't want to take responsibility for things which I know nothing about. So I would ask members to allow officers to do, number one, I don't know how we do that, to refuse to grant consent to those details might look bad, unless we simply suggest, but the officers can advise on that. Sorry, did you want to say something, Chairman?
Yes, indeed. We are here to talk about reserve matters, layout, scale, landscaping and appearance. The outline application and the conditions attached have already been agreed by this committee.
May I take some advice from officers on that, Chairman? Because I've got a recommendation in front of me, recommendation one on page five, and I was talking to that. Am I incorrect to speak about this, or am I not allowed to speak at these meetings, Chairman?
You mean recommendation B?
Sorry, Chairman, if I could start, I think colleagues may add to that. I mean, the information's been submitted and is before you, the officers have commented in the report the respective areas to advise you that those details are acceptable and inviting you to agree the detail. If however you're uncomfortable about that, it's open to you to resolve to grant delegated powers to me to carry out that for you. Clearly, the discharge of conditions is normally a delegated function, and we would do that on a technical basis, you're normally perfectly happy with your scheme of delegation which allows me to do that. So it's open for you to make that decision. There was another point raised about the management of the open space. I think that was Council Dinos, the car park. Sorry?
The car barn.
The car barn. I think we've, in terms of the management and maintenance of the communal areas of the development, then that is placed within the auspices of the management company through the Section 106 agreement, so it's all encompassing that communal areas are maintained through the management company. Does that help, Council Dinos?
Yeah, because I was just confused whether they were individually, like four houses, each had one parking space, or whether it was a general and therefore who would be responsible. It might have been discussed in your previous meeting, so...
Sorry, Chairman. Yes, so the car barn in question then, is this area here?
Yes, so the car barning question then is this area here. So there would be four spaces within the car barn. They would be allocated to a set unit, but they ultimately would be in that communal courtyard, so they would sort of fall under the management of the management company. Does that answer you?
Absolutely. Long as we know who is and it's very clear in our documentation, thank you for that answer.
Yes, thank you. Just to come back on a few other points, I think they've mostly been picked up. But firstly, councillor Townsend, in regard to the buffer. Yes, that was set out in the updated ecology information. That would be secured as part of the recommended condition. We're satisfied that the landscaping plans do provide for that appropriate buffer. So we've got that compliance condition recommended. Councillor Hyman, the matter of drainage, that was a matter that was considered at the outline stage. I think that's set out on page 40 of the agenda reports. With regards to recommendation B, and I think Elizabeth has already covered this point, but usually the discharge of conditions would be a delegated matter. It's only because they've been submitted as part of the current application that they form part of the recommendation, because the application is being determined this evening. In relation to each of those conditions, we have consulted with the statutory consultant. So that information is all within the relevant sections of the committee report. So we're just asking members to agree with officers following that input from the statutory consultees. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, am I all right to continue? You did cut off councillor Hyman in his prime.
Did I? Okay, fine. In which case, councillor Hyman, you want to continue?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes. My concern here was whether or not we have a guarantee that if 199 homes are built, if there are changes to this scheme, no changes to the section 106 agreement, and it's nothing to do with current developer, let's say this is a provision, we are giving for the, or being asked to give for the land. Do we have, if 199 homes are built, do we have a guarantee that the park will be provided as, in accordance with the planning application, which has been held up for a month due to this presumably, which hasn't come in front of us, and we have been not able to see the details of at the moment? I'm happy that A2 Dominion are working with the landowners to sort this out, the previous developer, the original applicants. And I'm happy with the details that they've, you know, of themselves they've given us. But as I say, it's not a consideration. We actually, what I would have preferred was some information about the trust, because I suppose that is what we have to trust to provide the public park. I've got some questions really about, okay, is there a guarantee? 199 homes, whatever size they would end up, because obviously, you know, 265 smaller homes, they might decide that they prefer to put up five-bedroom homes instead and only 199 of them. Do we have a guarantee of the park in that situation? My concern about the drainage issues here, which we're being asked to pass, as far as I'm concerned, without any, or approved without sufficient knowledge. Is the lake part of the attenuation that is proposed for this scheme, or is it not? Because if that's going to come forward and the details are going to come forward in future, I don't know how we can agree that at this minute. And that's why I'm suggesting that if officers want to do it under delegated powers, that's their responsibility. But I wouldn't want to take the responsibility for a decision I don't know, anything about. So if I would, if I can have an answer to, certainly to that, is the lake part of the attenuation proposals for this? I think that'll do for now. I mean, I do see at the third bullet point on page eight, Chairman, that it says it's imperative to the future of the public park that the phase one reserve matters application is approved as soon as possible to help fund the trust. Well, obviously, that's the maintenance, which is what they're going to be doing, is that doesn't come forward for possibly years. The park's got to be built first, and we've got different phases to go through. So I don't see that imperative that this is put through. And if the applicant is very happy to put through a section 106 agreement to change things, I would just ask why in the past fortnights, or why has this come back to us so quickly when they could have taken another week or two, had the other application forward at the same time for us to look at, which would have been nice? And they could have made a change to absolutely satisfy us that the park is absolutely guaranteed, rather than the 200th home. If they're happy to do that, I'd like them to do it before we agree to things. I don't think that's an unreasonable position to take, you know, because we don't know who the developer will be eventually, we just want to know that these are secured, Chairman, absolutely secured. So I still have concerns remaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. I'd just reiterate that the application has been submitted for reserve matters for Noel Park. The Noel Park Trust was established in January this year, and we know the three houses are being provided to provide income stream for the management and maintenance of the trust. The five trustees have been appointed, and the Noel Park Trust has got charitable status already. So we will see that one come to fruition very shortly, I'm sure. But officers, do you want to come back on councillor Hyman's comments?
Chairman, if I could just help here, I think this does warrant simplifying it slightly, and I come back to what I said at the outset of the meeting. Permission's been granted with a section 106 to deliver this development. The phasing of it is appropriate, it's been explained. I think the additional information you were seeking to give you confidence in that has been provided. The park will be provided, the details are not before you this evening, but it is binding on the developer, because that's one of the obligations in the section 106. And you can be confident it will be provided. If there's a breach of the planning obligation, you can enforce the planning obligation. That is normal planning practice. The point about their offer to vary the section 106, and I think the applicant was clear in the public speaking, is not actually material to your decision this evening. It's helpful background, and it may well happen, but you've already granted planning permission for this with a section 106 agreement, which deems the development to be appropriate and acceptable. So clearly, and I know you'll be expecting me to say this, but it is not appropriate to start to unpick the acceptability of that previous agreement, because that would be entirely inappropriate. It's been granted, it's been signed, and it is the starting point to underpin the delivery of this development. So I think you can be confident that the obligations will be provided at the appropriate trigger points, and that the phasing rationale has now been explained to you, that the development does need to be done in certain sequential format to enable future parts of development to be funded and supported by the earlier parts, and there's nothing unusual about that. So I do hope that's helpful and that's responded as simply as possible to your question. Thank you, councillor Hyman.
Chairman, can I...
Councillor Hyman?
Yes, thanks very much. So I mean, as far as the provision of the park, you've given me your absolute guarantee that that park will be provided. The other question in relation to the, whether the lake is part of the attenuation for the scheme, if I could just have an answer to that too, because that affects obviously the discharge of conditions issue.
Rebecca? Elizabeth.
Chairman, don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. We can certainly come back to you offline, councillor Hyman. The important point is, it's a detail, and the details have been considered by the lead local flood authorities, the statutory consultant on this, and they are happy. So in planning terms, you can have confidence in the detail. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that. I would appreciate questions like that, a little bit of advanced warning, because with these schemes, huge amounts of details for us to get our head around. We do like to inform your decisions as much as possible, but sometimes, some very specific questions like that are really difficult for us always to lay our hands on. But I don't think it undermines the integrity of this recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. councillor Story.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of points. First is in relation to councillor Gray's comments about the bin collection and your helpful comments, just to quote from our website. "If you can't move your wheelie bins or food waste caddies, you may be able to get help under our assisted collection scheme. We can offer assistance to those who are disabled or infirm, or where there is nobody else in the household who can help." So I think that confirms your comments. The second thing is, I think I'm exactly the opposite to councillor Dinas. I hate marmite, but I love these houses. I think if you look around the borough and the recent development schemes, there are literally thousands of bland houses being put up, all in the local vernacular. Isn't it nice to actually get something with a bit of thought, a bit of design concept into it, with a bit of excitement to it? And I certainly welcome these designs and look forward to seeing them when they get in place.
Thank you very much. councillor Townsend, do you want to come back?
Thank you for allowing me to come back. I'm afraid I'm going to ask something about the footpath again. I am aware of the advice given by our legal representative and saying that officers consider that there will be no harm. That would have been helpful for me to have that within the report. I don't think there's a section within the report. Usually, I see the bit where it says, you know, we've had this and this, however, on balance, officers consider that there will be minimal harm or something. So because that hadn't been read, I was, that's why my question arose tonight. I did catch up with the officers earlier to find out the information, but we couldn't find that information at the time, so that's why I'm bringing it up now. I do prefer to raise these issues prior to the meeting to make sure, however, this was an unavoidable one. I know that the information was within the EIA statement of conformity about the footpath and about it actually being, going along this area of the emergency road to the south of the site for the emergency vehicles. And obviously, it doesn't state in there the amount of convergence between the actual footpath and the vehicle access road, or the emergency vehicle access road. But I am wondering whether or not it is possible to try and tighten up the condition so that the footpath is maintained as it is. It's a very well-used footpath. I mean, lots of dog walkers use that footpath every single day. I'm talking about, you know, 30, 40 people use that footpath every day at least, walking their dogs. So I'm concerned about that it is maintained. And I wondered whether or not, under condition 18, that the development hereby approved should be carried out, and please, you know, I'm just talking on the hoof here, so let me know whether or not this would be appropriate, that in accordance with the measures and actions detailed within the preliminary ecological appraisal prepared by ECOSULIS, and also the EIA statement of conformity, could it be added on there so that the footpath is covered, because it is covered under that statement? Or perhaps that is implied elsewhere and doesn't need to be stated again?
Very interesting that this is a meeting held in public. It's not a public meeting, but I gather from the people in the gallery, A2 Dominion, Tom Martin is fully aware of the responsibilities cast on them by the public footpath and Surrey County Council, and they will do their utmost to comply with everything you said. Rebecca, do you want to come back to councillor Townsend? Elizabeth?
I was going to answer, but the chairman very helpfully gave that response, which I would endorse. All I would say is, and respecting the legal advice, that the committee should not impose conditions that can't be justified, it would run you into difficulties of unnecessary appeals and possible challenges. But it may be that your second point could be picked up in an informative to the applicants to express the concern of the committee, that you recognise it's a public footpath under the jurisdiction of the county, but you would wish to be assured that there'll be no unreasonable obstruction of this footpath going forward as the scheme is implemented. Would that cover off your concern? I think we could attach that then, County.
Yes, and they agree.
Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Hyman?
Yes, just very quickly, Chairman. I mean, I thank you very much to the officers for the guarantees that they've given. So I'm happy with recommendation A, and I think I'm going to have to vote in favour of that, from what I've heard. I was concerned, but in terms of recommendation B, would you mind, as Chairman, can I ask that we take them, I know we always do take them separately, but can they be addressed separately, rather than just bosch through and, you know, agreed-agreed sort of style? Because I do think it would be more appropriate to address the request for the discharge of conditions under the scheme of delegation. I'm not happy that we as members with very limited knowledge of this, or virtually none, other than that there hasn't been a complaint, should take the responsibility for it, when actually it's normally the responsibility of officers anyway. And so I'm asking whether members would consider that themselves, and perhaps try and persuade me otherwise if I'm wrong. Under items two and three, I think it is a recommendation B, I don't think that I've really got any problems with that, because we've had the assurances. So it's only that one part, Chairman, that I'm left concerned about. I would, unless others persuade me otherwise, I think I'd up staying on that part of it if we could take it separately. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor Gray, you want to come back?
Yes, please, as Chairman. I'm actually wanting a response to the point I made earlier, that on page 24, the highways response, it said, "The approach to trickle charging points of the dwellings and the three communal charging points satisfactory, providing the communal points are fast charged." Condition seven does not make that point. Do we need to add that? Because that was a requirement of the highways, and we must take notice of highways, because they are the statutory body, and we must do what they say.
Agreed. councillor Mullins?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to educate myself, in relation to councillor Hyman's point, my understanding is it's the council as a whole which takes these decisions. Whether it's done by the members or the officers doesn't make a great deal of difference. Indeed, I would expect much of the time to be advised by the officers on details such as those in recommendation B. So frankly, whether we're delegated to them formally or taking their advice and passing it ourselves, I think amounts legally to exactly the same thing, but perhaps I can be advised if I'm wrong.
Yes, I'd ask Lewis or Elizabeth to comment on that.
I would agree with councillor Mullins' conclusion. It's the council's decision, it's the council's decision. We feel we've given you enough guidance in the report for you to make this decision. The applicant is inviting you to make that decision because of the combination of the proposal with these conditions. But if you would prefer to delegate them to officers, it is in your, it's open to you to do that, and the decisions, you say, would have exactly the same weight. Thank you, Chairman.
Finally, councillor Townsend.
Sorry, just to clarify on the point about the recommendation B, can I just have confirmation? Are we just confirming the conditions for this particular phase? Or is it, as in condition 40, levels across the whole of the, finished floor levels across the whole of the site? Or is it just for this particular phase? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I come back? I mean, I've raised the question about charging twice now and haven't had an answer.
Yes, sorry, Chairman. Yes, I think we're talking about the electric vehicle charging points, condition seven. So that's been recommended by the county higher authority, that particular wording. Obviously, we'd consult them as soon as we get the information as part of the conditions discharge, and they are expecting to see all of the communal points to be fast charged. So they wouldn't agree until such time that that information has been submitted. If you would like us to include specific wording and reference to fast charge within the wording of the condition, we can certainly do that. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Gray?
Yes, please. I understand your point, but it looks to me as though this was written before their comments, and I think it would just make me feel a little bit more comfortable to have it in.
Could I just check with the officers that the informative on the footpath is going Okay. So members, let's move to the recommendation. Recommendation A.
Sorry, Chairman, I haven't had an answer to whether or not we're signing off conditions for the whole of... for the whole of the site, in which case that's quite a big task and nothing to do with this particular phase, or whether or not we're signing off conditions just that are attached to this particular phase. Thank you.
Okay, we're just checking at the moment. Rebecca?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, so the current application is just for Phase One. So as set out on page 32, we've had a plan showing the existing ground levels of this, of the site, along with the proposed ground levels and finished floor levels of the buildings proposed under this current phase. Thank you, Chairman.
Fine. If that's clear, then let's move to the Recommendation A, that subject... Councillor Townsend?
I'm really, really sorry, but the Condition 40, I've just got the application up, it refers to the whole 265 dwellings. And it says that "No development shall take place until details have been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority, showing the existing and proposed ground levels of the site for the whole of the site." There's nothing about the phasing on here. And to be fair, sorry, Chairman, but there's nothing under this Recommendation B that suggests it's just for the phasing. And my concerns are that this isn't within the red line boundary of the site we're looking at at the moment. These are matters that refer to the red line boundary of the entire site, including the SUDs, which I do believe does link in some way to the parkland. So I'm finding it very, very difficult to actually, to sign off conditions that apply to the whole of the site under this particular one phase, because once they're signed off, they're signed off as far as I can understand. Thank you.
But isn't WA 2016 2207 the outline planning application for this? No, for the whole site?
Chairman, I just ask the officers, if we modify Condition 40 so it specifically refers to this phase, would that address, would it be all of them?
Chairman, I'm just wondering, in the light of this outstanding question, and to avoid us being in any doubt as to misleading members on this particular point, whether it would be better, going back to councillor Mullins' point, that you resolve to grant delegated powers for the discharge of these conditions? Ordinarily, they would be delegated. It's a much more appropriate way of dealing with this and they're technical matters. And that would be probably the most reliable way of answering the question that's been asked in the efficiency of the meeting. I would recommend that that's what happens in this instance. The substantive matters have been before in relation to the reserve matters, but I don't think that we would want to give you a response that we're not wholly clear about this point. And to defer this item again for that reason would, I think, be counterproductive. So I would recommend that, Chairman. Thank you.
So just put that again, please, Elizabeth. Recommendation A?
In relation to Recommendation B, I would suggest that the committee grants authority to the head of planning to agree the details that are currently before you as a recommendation, which is the discharge of these details in relation to one, two and three under Recommendation B. Thank you.
I think we can move on then. Recommendation A is that subject to Conditions 1 to 18 as amended Conditions 7 and 18, and Informative 1 to 14 with the additional 15, the reserve matters of layout, scale, appearance and landscaping be approved. Those in favour, please show. Thank you very much indeed. And Recommendation B, that we delegate authority to the head of planning in accordance with standard procedure for delegated... Yeah.
Chair, do we need to propose that because it's not what's stated?
May I propose it, Chairman?
Yes, indeed.
Your new wording, I'm happy to propose.
And seconded.
Thank you. If everyone's happy with that, then can we vote on the amended Recommendation B? Those, please show. Unanimous. Thank you all very much indeed.